All right, let's go ahead and get started. Okay, let's go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead and do roll call, please.
Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Stephen? Commissioner Furby? Commissioner Seibel?
Here.
Commissioner Steenthop?
Here.
Thank you. All right, and let's just move straight into approval of the agenda for the evening. Anybody have any alterations, questions?
Will you approve the agenda?
Do I have a second? Second, second. All in favor of approval of the agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Nobody opposed? And then we're looking at the minutes from, actually it was October. It's been a little while. So we're looking at the minutes from October 7th, 2015. And I guess Commissioner Seibel, you were the only one here besides me. Do you have any additions, changes?
I just think that the motion for this particular conditional use permit is brilliantly worded and I could have done it better myself.
So, motion to approve?
So much.
A second? Second, thank you. Okay. And then before we get to the public hearing, oh. Oh, we have to vote, thank you. Okay, all in favor of approval of the minutes? Aye? Aye. No one opposed, thank you. First, I would like, it seems that we have somebody new first down there. Ms. Embick, if you could introduce.
Evening, Commissioners and Chair. This is Tracy Burnstead. She's our new planning technician. She may look familiar to you. She used to work at the Southwest Council of Governments as their transportation planner. So she'll be doing the minutes of the meetings from now on.
And then we have someone new to introduce. We have Susie Steenthop as our newest Commissioner, joining us for the first time this evening. And welcome aboard. And we do still, I believe, have space, if anybody's watching out there, we do still have space for another Commissioner. So anybody interested in applying, as always. Okay, then for our public hearing this evening, let me just go over, and I don't know if, Floyd, have you been here before for this? Okay, let me just go over with you how it works real quick. First, the City will present, and then we'll have an opportunity for you to come up and present. Normally, if somebody opposed, they would come up and present. But I don't think we're having that tonight. And then we'll have a, we have questions session. But because you will be doing a presentation, we do need to have you come up and swear in as an oath right now. And since you're presenting, you're going to be swearing in also. Okay.
Yes, you'll come over there and give your oath. And you will have us raise our right hand. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Floyd McElmont.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I am about to give
That the testimony I am about to give.
Will be the truth?
Will be the truth.
The whole truth?
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth?
Nothing but the truth.
On penalty of perjury.
Okay, then this evening, we are going to be hearing, public hearing, ZC 15-01, map amendment, zone change from a rural district to a commercial district for tractable land, which is addressed as 3901 Highway 90 South, Silver City, New Mexico. And because it's a zone change, there, were you informed that you would have to meet one of seven findings? Did they kind of, okay, and we'll be going over those again in a minute. We just want to make sure you're informed. All right, if we can go ahead and have your presentation. Oh, were there any ex parte conversations regarding this matter?
No.
Okay. And I do need to just state that Mastercraft Metals, we do use. However, we pay them, they don't pay us. So I do not have any monetary gain from Mastercraft Metals, but I do want to divulge that we do business with them.
FT discount?
No. Okay.
Good evening again. This is Zone Change 15-01. The property has been addressed as 3901 Highway 90 South, and the owner is Mastercraft Properties LLC. They're requesting a zone change from rural to commercial. The rural district in Land Use Code is, at this time, somewhat of a holding category for further development and is defined as intended to provide for annexed areas that will accommodate agricultural, ranching, and natural resource uses and very low-density residential uses until such time as other development is appropriate. So any rezoning, this category was made for areas of the town that were annexed that we're not quite sure which category they'll end up fitting in. Or some of them remain rural. It just could go either way, depending on the way the town develops. Just to clear up any confusion, the reason it states that this will just be a commercial category is because we haven't instituted the light commercial and the heavy, the highway district yet. The only one we've done is the historic downtown district. So this is in Section 3.2.7. It's the blanket commercial district that is in red on the map right now. And so at some time in the future, it will probably go to commercial highway. But we just aren't to that point yet. So Section 3.2.7 states, in the interim time period, until the commercial highway, commercial light, and commercial historic downtown zones are designated on the official zoning maps, the commercial district shall continue to exist. The use and dimensional requirements for the existing C district shall be as established herein for the commercial highway zoning district. After commercial highway, light commercial, and commercial historic downtown zone districts are designated on the official zoning maps, the commercial district shall be extinguished. So at some point in the future, this will be rezoned from the blanket commercial category to one of the others. But that may be a couple of years down the road, as we have staffing and the time to really look at those categories and where they fit in with the town. This is the subject property. Mastercraft Metals also owns this property to the south. That's where their current location is for their business. This yellow line you'll see right here is the line between the town and the county. So you'll see a little bit of their property is in the county. And there's no zoning in the county. So the zoning ends right here. And then this is Highway 90 South. There's also, I have a photo in here that you'll see later on in this show of this building also. And you'll notice that the land around it is, for the most part, vacant until you get to some residential areas down on Dixon Road. This is an overlay of the zoning map. There is a commercial up the highway towards town where Humphreys has their lot now. There's some industrial across the highway. This green color is the current rural zoning. And this is the piece of property that Mastercraft owns that has been rezoned to commercial for the building they're currently using. So this gives you an idea of what's in the area. And then, of course, the white is the county where there is no zoning. And I believe this is the church and the school across the highway there. This is a photo on the side of Highway 90. This is the current Mastercraft building. And this is the south side of the new property that they will be rezoning. And this is on the side of the highway looking west. This is the building that I mentioned earlier. It's looked, it appears somewhat commercially used. And then you'll notice there's a highway billboard there in the back. Currently, they use this Dixon Road for access, but they have completely adequate frontage off of Highway 90. So if in the future they wanted to work with the state and develop a driveway, they have plenty of frontage to comply with the town requirements. So I'll read this into the record for you, so that you don't have to repeat it in your motion. "When the Planning and Zoning Commission makes its recommendation to the Town Council, and when the Town Council makes the final decision, they shall at a minimum make at least one of the following findings. Number one, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. Number two, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. Three, the proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, an error in the assumptions about the property, surrounding uses, population forecasts, rate of land consumption, or other factors. Four, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. Five, the proposed amendment responds to changed conditions, such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use, or further studies that have been completed since adoption of the Land Use Code. Six, the proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state or federal legislation. And seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this Land Use Code without lowering the standards of this Land Use Code. It is the opinion of the Community Development Department that this map amendment zone change may be approved on the following findings. Number one, number two, number four, number five, and number seven. Do you have any questions for me, or would you like to see a slide again?
On the slide, when you had all the green, it was rural. Is any of it being used as rural?
Mr. McElmont could probably answer that better. I don't see anything when I drive by, but there's nothing that the town is aware of.
And then this area was all annexed at a certain point. How long back was it? I'm just curious.
Well, before this Land Use Code. It was quite a while. We haven't had any annexations in a long time. And this property actually had to be addressed. It was vacant before this, and it had never even had an address. The water doesn't even extend that far from the town yet. So it's kind of an area that is in the process of developing, but it's just the beginnings.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, the Commissioners have questions for the town?
Are the taxes for commercial more than rural?
That would be a question for the county assessor. The town doesn't let you know of taxes, their county does.
Okay, I have questions.
Sure.
The adjacent parcel to the northeast, the next parcel of the highway towards town, I guess, that's sort of in between this property we're talking about and the next piece of commercial property up. Who owns that?
Let me go to this map.
Have we talked to them at all about?
They've been notified, all of them, with the citizen participation. There was only, I think there was three property owners that surround them, and none of them had any comment or?
So they weren't at all interested in having their property be commercial as well? I mean, that seems like the logical zoning for all of this.
I think they're maybe not ready to know what they want to do with it yet, and so they're, they weren't ready at this point. May I also ask the applicant, he was going to see if he could contact them and see if they wanted to do it at the same time?
Okay.
And there doesn't appear to be any interest. So it's LLCs that own it. So I'm not sure that they're ready to move on their investments in which way they'd like to go, but they were notified.
Might still be Blair Turner, I don't know.
It is. That's the piece of property that you were asking about. That's who owns that one.
Okay, figured.
This one.
Yep, that's the one?
Yes. So at some point, when they are ready to move, they could definitely change it to commercial.
This has nothing to do with this case, really, but you showed a picture of the Free Delay Building there.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a billboard in that picture. How is there a billboard in that picture?
They have a sunset clause. They have 25 years from the time that that was enacted to remove them.
I see. Well, we've already started making people in town take down billboards, right?
They can't do any new ones. And the ones that fall down, I don't think they were replacing those. But you'll notice there's still some in town, like, although it is not relevant to this case. But there are some that do still exist in town. And they had a 25-year sunset clause from the time that was enacted.
I thought it was shorter than that.
No. It was so that they could get a return on their investment.
Right, and I recall the sunset clause. I just thought that it had sunsetted already.
What do you want us to say?
I don't know.
I'll tell you in a minute, I'm going to look at it.
Yeah, we can, yeah, and we can discuss that later, because it doesn't really apply to this.
Right. Sorry.
No problem. Is there any other questions or slides you'd like to see again? I'm a little slow going to the previous.
I'll take the from the app.
Okay. Mr. McElmont, would you want to go ahead and come up and present?
Thank you, Commissioners. I will just note, the first finding, the proposed amendment, is substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. It appears to mean that everything from Cooper Street to Dixon Road is of commercial use.
Dixon Road is the one that you turn in?
Yeah, Dixon Road is the one, yeah, right there by the Free Delay Building. But that's it, yeah.
And you're going to be expanding your current business into this section?
We hope to build a similar structure on that parcel.
Not that it matters, but are you going to use that for yourself?
Yes.
Okay. And from the aerial photograph, it's kind of hard to tell, but there's some kind of structure or something that's kind of on the part of that property that's away from the highway? Just curious about what that is.
There's no other structures.
It's just sort of a clearing. Where that road runs, it seems like there's something there. Yeah, that's about as close as you can get. That road kind of runs across the back, so that's just?
That is, that's my driveway.
Right.
There is a primitive road that goes back there. And sometimes they'll use that when there's, when there was a fire back in there, why they used all that. Other than that, it doesn't get used.
On the new section, two questions. One is, will you be having parking? And two, are you going to continue to just always have the access off of Dixon Road as opposed to, you're not going to create a highway access?
Well, I talked with the DOT about it, and highway access is possible. I don't know that we can afford highway access. It's because it requires a median, a paved median, and some other things. It'd be quite expensive.
And we have a parking area by the other building then too, I assume?
I'm assuming that the building department will require parking. Not sure how many spaces for our usage.
Yes, that'll, when they actually start to build on the property, it'll be similar to St. Francis that you heard. They'll have to go through the commercial development review plan. And is this a five-acre parcel? It's relatively large. So they should have quite a bit of room to do drainage and grading and parking and all of that.
And will this building really be more for workers? Or will it also be having customers coming into it?
Similar to what we have now, we don't have a lot of retail traffic. People come in, but we do have some.
So, Mr. McElmont, you're saying the road access is already there?
Yes.
I don't know what I need.
Okay, thank you. I think we have all of our questions answered.
I guess the one thing I did, was wondering is, I guess you talked to Blair Turner, and they're just not interested in rezoning yet?
I didn't actually get a hold of them. I sent them a letter, and I never heard back from them, so.
I just be doing this piece at a time thing like that?
Ten years ago, when we rezoned that, Jennifer was here. And I don't know who made the decision, but according to her, they were just, this is the way they were going to do it, piecemeal. But you addressed that also, about how you were intending to do it in the future.
Yes, so the town, we started it when Jim Coats was here, when we did the commercial historic downtown. We're definitely looking at rezoning areas, but we don't want to rush into it while we're having staff changes. So it's coming up in the near future. And with our new assistant town manager, that's one of the things that he has that he would like us to continue working on. So this is kind of a measure to allow them to use their property in the interim, because we don't have a definite timeframe on those zone changes. So more than likely, this would end up, if the other property owners concur, more than likely, it would be highway commercial. But of course, that's sometime in the future, and I'm not sure what time that will be.
I'm just curious. If we're doing this rezoning, and it's already a spot zoning, why are we doing the interim commercial thing? Why don't we just, instead of having it be a spot zone of commercial, have it be a spot zone of highway commercial?
Well, Mr. Russell and I talked about that. But we think it has the least impact on the neighbors right now. And then at the time that we do the large rezoning, they might care to have a little more input. So we're just going to do it to match what they already own and is already there. You'll notice on, I think, let's see, this slide, the only commercial use right there is this interim zoning that's existed before this Land Use Code. So we thought it would have less impact on the community if we go with what's already there. And then when we're ready for the larger zone change, they might care to have a little more input. We'll also see where development goes in that area, because it's probably going to be one of the last ones we do. We're looking at light commercial first, like we did the historic downtown. So we kind of started on the mixed-use end and are going to the heavy. And there's also industrial property right there. So there's just a lot more to look at with that. And at this time, it has the least amount of impact on the neighbors, because it already exists in that area. So it's one of those six of one, half a dozen of the other.
I think we're done for that portion. And now it's just up to us to have, see if we have any discussion, or I will entertain a motion.
Well, I guess I move that we approve map amendment zone change, ZC 15-01, from a rural district to a commercial district for tractable land, addressed as 3901 Highway 90 South, Silver City, New Mexico, with the following finding. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan.
All right. And we don't have to do more than one, but did you want to add any of the others?
That was the one you suggested. It works for me.
All right. So approved with finding number one. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
And do we need any, or have any discussion? I'm just going to simple, since it's coming down the pike anyway. All right. If you would call for a vote.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Seibel?
Aye.
Commissioner Steenthop?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And then this goes, you're probably aware, this goes to City Council. And they're, will it be in their next meeting?
They've had a little bit of rescheduling in February, and so I'll have to check. But it's, there's the same public notice requirement rules. So I'll have to check to see what they moved their meetings to. But it'll be publicly noticed, just like this one was. But they've had a little, with the legislature going on, they've rescheduled February a little bit.
All right, so we'll put forward our recommendation that we approve. It goes to them, and they'll contact you to let you know when that meeting is going to be. Okay, thank you. And we do not have any new business? Community forum is up, and we don't have one? If you want to discuss, we've not had a community forum in a long time. Do we have any areas of interest in community forum? Do we not? Do we, any ideas? I guess if we could explain the community forum. For a while, we were trying to bring in various people to do, well, like, for example, we've had the fire department come in. We've had people come in talking about the bicycle-walking plans, just different things that are affecting our community, and trying to promote some discussion and having some forums. And so if somebody has an idea that they would like for a forum, that is something we have the opportunity to do during part of these meetings. So.
I know that Main Street Program recently hired a new executive director. I wonder if we might not ask, if not at the next meeting, sometime soon, if she and some of the board would come and do a presentation on downtown development, redevelopment activities in Silver City. I'd be interested to hear a presentation on that.
I do know that we have conditional use scheduled for March, and a conditional use scheduled for April. And Mr. Russell and I have also worked on some Land Use Code changes, just some upgrades, some minor little things, that'll be probably in April. So would you like to do it maybe for May?
Sure.
And maybe we could do a little fire season if the Main Street manager can't make it that time?
Okay.
Well, I mean, how extensive do we think that these? Because I just assumed. Yeah, well, I mean, since we're going to be meeting anyway. I mean, if these, if we figure, you never know, of course, but if we figure there'll be relatively uncontroversial actions like this one tonight, I'd just assume do a forum at a meeting like this, rather than, you know, come out for half an hour and?
Okay. Would you like me to contact her then?
If you don't mind. I mean, I could certainly do that too. But an official, you know, request from staff might be, might be nice.
And would you like to do that in March or April? They're very similar type conditional uses.
You said you have something for a little bit in April, so maybe March would be the preference. But if they can't do March, then April. And obviously, if they can't do either, then maybe we keep, you know, with their schedule.
And we'll give you the available for the March meeting.
All right, do we have any reports from staff?
Introduce Tracy Burnstead again. And so she will be at the front desk. If you, people come in for applications, she'll be them. We actually have someone to greet the public now, so it should help with the office flow quite a bit for the public that comes in.
Thank you. And reports from Commission. Anyone have anything this evening?
I've got a couple things. On the community forum thing, another thing I'd be interested in, I don't know if they would want to do this or not, but maybe, I'd be fascinated to hear from Dr. Shepherd. I know they've got the Lighthall project that they finished. They're working on that recreation center, athletic complex, whatever thing. I mean, I'd be fascinated. We don't actually have any jurisdiction over university property, but it would be interesting to hear, you know, some of the things that they're working on and some of their long-term thoughts. I know he's been working a lot with the town in terms of the, you know, second phase of their College Avenue project. So I don't know if they would want to get into that or not, but I can think of all sorts of things. And it might be nice to build that bridge with the university, especially since we don't, we can't say boo-boo.
Yeah, his office also.
And then, you have a thing I have? Is, I looked it up. Section 5, 15.6, off-premise outdoor advertising signs. Section F, pre-existing billboard signs. Any off-premise sign whose single-face square footage exceeds 200 square feet erected prior to January 12th, 1999, will be allowed to continue in operation for a period not longer than 12 years from the January 12th date, and shall thereafter cease to display commercial or non-commercial messages in both the sign and any independent support structure shall be removed upon request of the Town Council. I only, the only reason I was thinking that, because I know, you know, that there was that sort of famous Parish for Tires billboard that was downtown. And I know that the town asked Mr. Parish to take that down. There was another billboard downtown that got removed. And it just, I mean, those, obviously, from an aesthetic point of?
from an aesthetic point of view, maybe were a little more important to the community, but it only seems fair, if you're going to ask some property owners to comply with the law, maybe we should look into having them all do that.
So, that would be code enforcement or contact the counselor in your district. So, mainly, code enforcement works off things that are reported. So, if it's a concern for you that they come down, you could go forward with your counselor or code enforcement.
It just seems like an issue of fairness, that's all.
It's not, we just never come up.
Okay.
I would imagine it's just never come up. So, I would suggest contact Julie Solice or your town counselor. There was one on Highway 180 that she had removed last year, but it had broken, so...
I was wondering, this might be more of a zoning question, but I think the last that I knew, trailers in town, mobiles in town...
Manufactured housing.
Manufactured housing, is that right? Okay. Could be no older than 1978. Is that still...
They have to have a HUD seal. So, if they're going to be moved into the town, we have a moving permit, and they have to show that it has a HUD seal. And that program started approximately 1979, so most of them are newer than that. But it has to have a HUD seal to be moved into the town. And I just so happen to have a copy of a moving permit here, and so, that information is all required before they can move it into the town. The homes that are older than that exist, the rules don't apply to their grandfathered, and they existed before this. So, it's just new manufactured housing that's moved into the town. It has to have a HUD seal, and it's generally 1979.
Okay. All I'll say is, I apologize for my phone. My phone is never on. It must have got bumped in my purse, because it's never on. I swear. Anyway, anything else at all from staff or commission? Okay.
No, but I do have a suggestion. It seems like some cases bring up other ideas, so that's a great time to come into our office or talk to your counselors. A lot of things come from being reported. So, of course, I even had a longer sunset clause in my mind, so it hasn't come to the forefront. So, by all means, come into the office if you think of these things, or talk to your counselors about them.
Just want to remind folks that town council elections in Districts 1 and 3 are coming up on the 3rd of March, which is basically a month from tonight. And early voting, I think, is going on now at City Hall, so I hope people will take advantage of that. And the Daily Press and Katz and Kootch are going to be sponsoring a candidate's forum for the candidates for town council, and that'll be two weeks from tonight, February 17th, in this room at the Grant County Administration Building at 6:00 P.M. And so, obviously, the public's invited will be accepting written questions from the audience, and a great chance to find out about the people who will be representing you for the next two years.
And just follow up on that. Thank you for you were on the radio this morning, doing the same thing for the school board, I believe. And there still is 25 minutes more to vote, right? So, if you have not voted, please, please, get out and vote. Anything else? Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn?
I'll second the motion?
You can make the motion, because I didn't make it.
I just, I'll take the motion.
Oh, you took the motion. I move adjourn.
I second the motion.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.